Are you ready, Homa? Okay, just a couple more seconds.
Maria.
It is 5:30. We will call the meeting to order. Rule call please.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Here.
Councilmember Tate?
Present.
Mayor Flores?
Present. We will now go into oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the City Council on any matters scheduled for closed session. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. We don't have any oral communications in-house. How about on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. We will now move on to City Council closed session.
Thank You, Your Honor. We have six items before the council in closed session this evening. The first pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.8, Council Real Property Negotiators' property APN 261-130-004, Agency Negotiator John Lawless negotiating party City of Porterville and Cornerstone Main Partners II LP under negotiation terms and price. Item II, Government Code Section 5495-6.8, Council Real Property Negotiators' property APN 298 North Main Street Suites II and III, Porterville, California, Agency Negotiator John Lawless negotiating party City of Porterville and friends of the Porterville Library under negotiation terms and price. Item III, Government Code Section 5495-7.6, Council Labor Negotiator, Agency Negotiator John Lawless and Patrice Sodeth, Employer Organizations, Porterville Peace Officer Association and Porterville City Firefighter Association. Item IV, Government Code Section 5495-6.9, Subsection D, Subsection I, Council Legal Counsel, existing litigation Ray Dean Strawn v. Bruce Sokoloff et al., U.S. District Court Eastern Division Case Number 1:22-AT-00742. Item V, Government Code Section 5495-6.9, Subsection D, Subsection III, Council Legal Counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, eight cases in which facts are not yet known to potential plaintiff. And item VI, Government Code Section 5495-6.9, Subsection D, Subsection IV, Council Legal Counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case.
Thank you. It is 5:31. We will go into closed session.
It is 6:31. We will reconvene, open session, and report on reportable action taken in close session.
At this time, no. Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Tate? Remain standing for an invocation or a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone that would like to lead us in an invocation?
Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day and we're thankful for all of our freedoms that we have to meet and express our differences and our opinions on things that happen in our city. We pray, Father, that the City Council will listen to your promptings tonight, Father, in the decisions that they make that affect the people of Porterville and the businesses of Porterville. We love thee, Father, and my son, Jesus Christ, and we're grateful for all the many blessings you give us daily. Our lives are so blessed by thee. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? You may be seated. Thank you. We will now go into the presentation for the Employee of the Month. Will Rosio come forward, please? Rosio Mejia has been selected as the City of Porterville Employee of the Month for October 2022. Rosio began her career with the city in January 2020 as a Housing Administrative Aid in the Community Development Department. In the past month, Rosio has recently been operating as an Acting Assistant Planner. Rosio was raised in Porterville and graduated from Porterville High School. She has a Bachelor's of Science from Cal State Bakersfield. Rosio is happily married to her high school sweetheart, Victor, and has two lovely daughters, Emma and Abby. When she is not serving in the City of Porterville, Rosio enjoys family movie nights with her family, weekend family gatherings, and she enjoys planning potlucks. The department has benefited from this strength. Rosio's favorite part of her job is the people she works with and being a part of the teamwork environment. When asked her accomplishments, Rosio notes that one of the biggest joys in her prior position was being able to assist families purchase their first home or make much-needed repairs to their homes that without the city assistance, they wouldn't be able to achieve. Rosio also provides translation services for families seeking services or information from the city. Rosio has also established great relationships with partner agencies and has made numerous presentations on the housing programs as well as revamped the social media and marketing materials for her previous role. Rosio volunteers to take the lead on projects assigned to her division, demonstrating her teamwork mentality and leadership. Now, in her new role, her strengths have shown once again as she embraces her new task with enthusiasm. Rosio's goals for 2022 is to continue to gain knowledge and experience, to continue to be a great resource for the community, especially in her new role. Please join me in congratulating Rosio Mejia as the Employee of the Month for 2022 in the Community Development Department.
Thank you, City Council, for this recognition. It was very unexpected. I just do my work. I didn't deserve a recognition. A couple of years ago, I was trying to convince the city to give me a job here, and I was convinced that they didn't want me here. But here we are. I thank the City of Porterville for this career opportunity. I've enjoyed the time I've been here. Thank you to Jason and Hadiya. They have been guiding me all along. And also to my biggest cheerleaders, Victor and my two girls, Emma and Abby. They never stop believing in me. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce your family? Rosio, would you like to introduce your family? Thank you. Thank you. Cool. Congratulations. We will now go into oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items in the schedule for public hearing at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. And we'll ask that you just please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to come forward?
Brock Neely, address on record. Over the past few months, we've had people come up here that are running for public office that report to be Christians and everything, and talking derogatorily about the unstably housed, calling them pedophiles, drug addicts, alcoholics. So I just want to read something for them to remember. This is from Matthew 2537 to 1777. This is from Matthew 25:37-43, from the King James Version. Then shall the righteous answer to him, saying, "Lord, when saw we thee ahungered and we fed thee, or thirsty and we gave thee drink; when saw we a stranger and we took thee in, or naked and clothed thee; or when saw we thee sick or in prison, we came into thee." And the king shall answer and say unto them, "Verily, I say unto you, in so much as ye have done it unto one of the least of these, my brethren, ye have done unto me." Remember that when you think you're a Christian.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to come forward? Please do so.
My name is David Horowitz. You know my address. So this is for the council to maybe learn from an experience I just recently had, and then maybe I'll explain what it all means. So, as you can see, I'm wearing a brace thing on my arm. So I went to my doctor with pain in my arm. I'm 61. Elevated blood pressure. They assume you're having a heart attack or a stroke. Okay, I can understand that. So they throw me into an ambulance, and they take me to our great hospital. They do an EKG on me, and of course, I'm perfectly fine. There's nothing wrong with my heart, which I already knew. I tried to explain to the doctors, hey, I've got a pain in my arm. So kind of like our council of late, they did a CT scan on my brain. Never listened to me. So I said, it comes out fine. I said, yeah, I know, but I've got a pain in my arm. So they did an MRI. Came back normal. I said, I know. That's not where the problem is. I have a pain in my arm. So they did a chest X-ray. Of course, the chest X-ray was fine. I said, I know. My chest doesn't hurt. My arm really hurts, though. So then I laid in ER all night. Five in the morning, they put me in a room. At eight o'clock, they send in a guy to do a sonogram of my heart. Guess what? There's nothing wrong with my heart. I know that. My arm really hurts. So finally, the three genius doctors, who, like I said, didn't want to listen to their patient, came in and finally had to admit I'm not having a stroke or a heart attack. By the way, would you like us to X-ray your arm? For two days, I've been asking you to X-ray my arm. So they X-ray my arm. I have a tear in my rotator cuff. No big deal. We'll get it fixed. The point of this whole thing is, these three doctors never listened to the patient. The three doctors knew more than the patient knew. So the three doctors did what they wanted, and they ran up a big bill for no reason. It's kind of like what's been happening with our City Council lately. So a good example of those things are, we'll start with dispensaries. You gave the dispensary license to out-of-state people, so all the money leaves our community. Then you're going to give a dispensary license to a 100% local, and your own committee says, give it to the group who's already qualified. But you guys say, nah, we'd rather waste more of the taxpayers' money. Let's reopen it and start the whole process all over again. If it was your money, you probably wouldn't have done that. Now, let's get into annexing. People think being annexed into the city is a great thing for the citizens. Wrong. Here's what I've learned about annexing. It will cost the citizen that's annexed a tremendous amount of money, and he has no choice in it. You guys will freely spend our money, and you'll add it to the price of our property taxes, and we have no choice in the matter. It's really unfair the way you determine how you do this, because I live in a three-bedroom, two-bath house on a residential lot, and you're charging me just under $14,000 to bring it to the front of my property. I have a friend who lives around the corner. He has a three-bedroom, two-bath house, just like me. You're bringing one thing to the front of his house, just like me. But behind his house, he has two acres of property. So since you assess it on the number of acres the person has, he's assessed almost $40,000 to do the exact same thing you're doing for me for $13,700. So where's the fairness in that? Secondly, it's the city's infrastructure. If you wanted us to be part of your city, you should have supplied the infrastructure, not us. We're paying for your infrastructure that you can now charge us for using. How fair is that, once again? When they bought their homes, possibly, but, you know, I'm not here to debate things with you, and if you want to get into debate...
Legal counsel.
Let's get into the Bible about you. You don't want to go there with me.
Yep. You can direct the individual to direct his comments to the council, number one.
I was trying to when this gentleman interrupted.
I get it. I'm just talking to the mayor.
Good. Then talk to this gentleman. Tell him not to interrupt.
Well, I'm going to... Please summarize, Mr. Horowitz. Thank you.
The point was, you forced us to do this. We didn't have a choice in it. I don't see where that's the American way. You wanted us in your city so you could get more tax revenue for us. That's what it was all about. And now you're forcing us to pay for your infrastructure. To me, that's not fair. Again, and the way you did it wasn't fair. Why am I paying $13,700, and another man who you're doing the exact same thing for is paying $40,000? How is that fair?
Is there anyone that else would like to come up? Please do so now.
My name's Raydean Strawn, 54 West Danner Avenue, Porterville, California. I am running for Porterville School Board trustee in Area 5. I don't remember ever calling anybody an alcoholic or a drug addict from this podium, ever, or anyplace else. That's their own personal business, and it's not mine. Yes, I am a Christian. I'm proud of it. I'm a Mormon. We always get weird looks sometimes, but I've been a Mormon since 1993. And I love my Heavenly Father. I love Porterville. I was born and raised here. And I will always state my opinion on things that I think are wrong or things I think are right. That's my freedom. That's my prerogative. I can do that. If Mr. Neely has a bone to pick, from this podium is not the place to do it. It's not the place to sling words at people and say they're aren't Christian. I really resent that, and he owes this podium and everyone else an apology. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to come forth? Please do so now. Do we have anyone on virtually that would like to come in?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll now go to the AB 1234 reports. This is the time for all AB 1234 reports required pursuant to Government Code 53232.3. The first one is the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee, and I'm going to begin with Councilmember Tate, and then I will ask Councilmember Wyrock to add comments.
The Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee met on September 21st, 2022, and we reviewed that there were three proposals received through the RFP process which have been independently reviewed by an independent party evaluation. And there was a recommendation made, and we're considering an interview to be held later on this month for the qualified respondents for the RFP, for the locally-owned cannabis business operating committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Wyrock?
It was one of the first committees I've had the honor to attend since being appointed member of the council. And the dialogue was open, and a lot of interesting comments were made about the story behind what got us to where we are today. And during my interview for this position, I stated that when the comment was asked of me about what I think of the cannabis laws, I shared that, you know, the state has pretty much let the cat out of the bag, and I think overall, the city has done well with that. And taking a look at three more proposals was an interesting part to be a part of. I mean, we didn't look at the proposals, but we're going to have a presentation here, I think, in two weeks, and the three candidates are going to be here to share their information. All three proposals, I believe, went under a third-party review for compliance with the planning requirements so that, you know, they're not going to get disqualified once they make it in this room. And they were scored, and somebody in the meeting said, we don't want the City Council to know what their scores are. We just want to hear the presentations. We want to take a look at their materials, and then we'll make our decisions. And then we all have some points, I guess, that we can share towards each different proposal, and there'll be a score at the end of the day that will, I guess, help that person win the selection for the third facility. I invite everybody who has an interest, either in this room or online, to take part. I think it's an open meeting.
Yes, it is.
It is an open meeting. And, you know, we look forward to having you guys here to hear the stories of these three groups that put in a lot of effort to try to provide a service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
May I just make one more comment?
All right.
I think it'll be an interactive-type situation where we'll be able to ask questions as well when we have this. So, you know, I think that that's going to help us to be able to look into the specifics of each applicant.
That's what the City Council gets to consider tonight in the scheduled matter in a little bit.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now go on with the Tulare County Homeless Task Force meeting. This was a virtual meeting, however, I chose to attend in person since I had to be in Visalia for another meeting that afternoon. There were no public comments. The first order of business was to adopt the resolution to allow the task force on homelessness to continue to hold meetings remotely. The minutes of August 17th were approved. Mr. Whitaker provided updates on project Room Key and Home Key. There were two presentations that were carried over, one that was originally scheduled regarding the Tulare Encampment Resolution Project, and the other was the draft of the HHIP Incentive Plan. Bridges to Employment and Careers in Porterville was presented by Ms. Martinez through the WIB program. The Environmental Clean-up Opportunities in Visalia was presented by Laurel Hernandez through WIB. Updates were from the cities. In Claudia Calderon's absence, I was happy to provide the report on her behalf for the Porterville Welcome Center. The unduplicated number as of September 20th were 2,274 individuals. They are currently serving up to 80, 90 people per day. The LINK events continue to take place every other Wednesday. The next one will be October 5th, and they are also gearing up for Thanksgiving dinner event for their sheltered clients and are accepting donations to provide that meal. The LINK Committee continues to meet to support their efforts. They have a code drive going on right now, as well as a drive-through fundraiser dinner, which will be tomorrow, October 6th. With regard to Finkus Arena, they are holding a Community Partnership Roundtable on October 18th. The location will be here in the council chambers. They are finalizing marketing materials for leasing. They are recruiting two management and one maintenance position for the local community for this project. As of August, they were 58% complete with building one and to be completed mid-December, and building two by March of 2023. Solar panels to be installed in the next few weeks. The Porterville Police Department Homeless Program Officer Silva continues his outreach efforts, and while they finalize the crisis intervention specialist social worker recruitment, he has met with the Employment Connection to further provide wraparound services for the program. The ARPA funds, $250,000, were granted to self-help enterprises for the Finkus Arena project. Currently working on the expansion of the Porterville Welcome Center to be funded with ARPA funds. Final estimates are not yet complete. That concludes the report. The next meeting is October 19th. The Council of Cities meeting was right after this one. Mr. Lawless and I attended in person. The minutes of May 18th were unanimously approved. There were only two items that were brought to the table on behalf of the City of Visalia for discussion only. That was the ag land mitigation. There was a general plan discussion, the supplemental AIR fee and mitigation, Sierra Club and Sequoia, return investment, business incentives, and water conservation. We had shared that we had been presented at the Water Commission meeting a program of sustainable agriculture lands conservation. With regard to the industrial water usage, a handout was provided to those of us that were present. Visalia expressed the concern to a couple of projects that were brought forth to the Tulare County Economic Development, in particular, to the acreage size, the acre-feet used, the water source, and then that annual balance concerns. All of this were discussed. There were no actions taken. The next meeting is scheduled for November 16th. The Casino Relocation Committee meeting. This is a smaller group of the relocation committee. It was city staff, Eagle Mountain contractor representatives, legal councils, the Honorable Chairman Neil Perron, respected tribal council members, William Garfield and Gary Santos. Councilmembers Stowe and myself were present. It was status updates on roadway improvements, non-potable water for casino supply, and the detention basin. Nothing specific to report. These discussions will continue. The Tulare County Economic Development. September 28th, Mr. Lawless, Mr. Reidenauer, and I attended in person. There were no public comments. The minutes of August 24 were approved. The financials through August 31st were detailed and approved. The first item was the Tulley River Economic Development Presentation. It was a 40-acre project. They were requesting a letter of support. Mr. Dennis Ikis of the TRADC, who's the CEO, and Mr. Bill Hayder, who is the Board of Director for TRADC, were present. Mr. Ikis provided the Section 17 background, explained that it was formed about three years ago. It is separate from the tribal council. Currently under the auspice is Eagle Feather, Stony Creek, Landing 13, and Eagle Feather 2. Mr. Hayder is the one that presented. He spoke of the 40 acres that is owned by the tribe, and they sought lease agreements from them again. They are applying for an EDA loan, federal grant funds for this project, and are seeking a letter of support from the TCEDC that they have a plan, and they use four creeks to help this plan to develop. He presented several probable projects, perhaps such as a grocery store, sporting goods, urgent care pharmacy, mini-storage, office space, tire recycle facility, a 24-unit hotel. Discussion to this regard from board members present. The concern was with the water table, and it was stated this was in the county. This was the original location that the Eagle Mountain Casino site, and that did not happen. And the question had been asked if they had done their community research or have they conducted a forum of community members. Once again, that this is a county-area jurisdiction. And there was a representative there from the county indicating that this was the first, that they had heard about it. This is in a mountainous area. Questioned what other support had been received. The project plan was asked to be sent to the Board of Directors electronically. There was not a decision made at this meeting. It will be brought back to the scheduled meeting for board direction. There was the project and client service updates. There was just information, staff updates, the renewal of sublease agreement. TRADC will be moving into a smaller office area in the WIB. It reduces the number of square feet from 455 to 356 square feet effective October 1st. The sublease amendment shall commence July 1st for a term of one year. The City of Tulare board seat for the TCEDC, Councilmember Terry Serr is a current member. City Manager Mark Mandell will become the member. The question was brought to the table. I had the board bylaws with me. It stated that the public sector director may be an elected official, a city manager, or county administrative officer or designee. No further discussion. The board took action unanimously. Mark Mandell is now the City of Tulare representative on the board. There was brought back was a board seat candidacy. There was, brought back was a board seat candidacy. That information and that seat will be held off until the strategic planning session where the bylaws will be reviewed, the member participation, the attendance and the public sector and the board handbook. We are going to be waiting for the strategic planning to happen, which will be at the next scheduled meeting of October the 26th, after the regular meeting. And that concludes that report. The Internal Audit City Committee. We met on September the 28th in person. Were attendance or members, Mr. Lawless, Mr. Taylor, Rob Taylor, Maria Bemis. Virtually was the Vice Mayor, Kelly Carrillo and Legal Counsel Julia Lu. Scheduled matters. The minutes of August the 24th were unanimously approved by the members in attendance. Review of the Barn Theater Agreement, review of the license agreement between the City of Porterville and the Barn Theater for the use of real property located at 42 South Plano. There was discussion as to the status of a property profile. It was concluded that a title search will be ordered. Rewording the theater, fine arts, special events was briefly highlighted. This item will be carried over to the next meeting. More information will be requested, gathered and communications to continue prior to meeting via legal councils, if any. With regard to the Federal Transit Administration Triennial Review, that was an update only. Tricia Whiteley did an excellent job providing us with the update. I would like to thank her personally for her work involved to include us in the correspondence that began in early August. The report itself was extensive. She provided us with the summary. It may take approximately three years to hear back once it has been submitted, but it all looks good. Review of the Status Pension Obligation, bond validation. It's all done. It's published. It's passed, signed by the judge. This item is forthcoming to a city council meeting either in November or December. Review of the Friends of Library Lease Agreement. This was presented as a new order of business. There were two representatives from the Friends of the Library who brought forth following of non-exclusive tenants, needs of less or how much space to occupy, the sharing of the facility from non-exclusive to exclusive and utilities caused month-to-month. Discussion to this regard was to tighten the language. Mr. Moore from Parks and Leisure will be bringing this to council, probably at the next council meeting with all the revisions. Then for the next meeting, we will once again bring back the Barn Theater Agreements, Kiwanis and Park Projects. That concludes this report. Our next meeting is scheduled for October the 26th at 4:00. Now it's time for someone else. The Tulare County Regional Transit Agency Meeting, Councilmember Stowe? I can't hear you. You're muted.
Mute, I'm sorry. Thank you, but I'd like to refer to Councilman Wyrock if he's willing to. If not, I'm prepared to give it.
Councilmember Wyrock? He said, "Go ahead."
Okay, great. We had a special meeting held at Tulare County Regional Transit Agency on September 28th. Vice Mayor Carrillo, Councilman Wyrock, Mr. Lawless, Mr. Knight, myself were in attendance. The agenda included two presentations, first by TransDib stating how they provide training for their 120 employees and has provided new hire training of 32 new people. Second presentation was given by Mr. Tree on their planning effects, how to take place for the Cross Valley Corridor. Mr. Tree described how the TCRTA is taking lead and connecting over 15 communities in Kings and Tulare High Speed Rail stations. He described the recent TIR CPA award of 33.7 million will be provided, funding to construct the Lindsay and Hanford Transit Centers, as well as the purchase of zero-emission vehicles that will be operating in the Cross Valley Corridor. And the agenda also included two action items. First was the TCRTA approved the CAS advance and repayment of agreements from the county of Tulare and City of Porterville, City of Tulare, City of Dainuba and the City of Woodlake combined. The CAS advance will provide the TCRTA 5 million in working capital until local state and federal funds are received. The board has also approved a formation of sustainability committees who will be reviewing the TRTA's, formation and foundations and financials on a monthly basis. Councilman Wyrock volunteered to be part of the, I mentioned volunteer, who kind of, I kind of helped push him in there, but I hope, I was glad he didn't turn it down because I think he'd be great for the committee. And he will be serving on this committee. And they will have, be having their first meeting on Thursday at 9:00 a.m. And the second action item was approved by three grant agreements of the Federal Transit Administration. Mr. Tree pointed out that these three agreements were symbolic to receiving federal funds, but also important in that once the TCRTA execute these grant agreements, the members, member agencies will not be able to apply for the federal transit funding until next year. And the three grant agreements totaled 5.6 million. And they will, and they are specifically for the City of Porterville and City of Tulare operations as they are funded from the small urban section of the FTA. And the next scheduled meeting, the TCRTA board, is October 17th at 6:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I just want to make a note because, and I want to thank you for that report, that I did attend the Board of Supervisors meeting on September the 27th, as I stated I would, when we made our decision for the TCRTA loan that we were going to do from the City of Porterville. And that item was on the consent calendar for the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. It was pulled just for a discussion and it was, the CEO provided his report. Mr. Tree was there to answer questions, if any, and it was just to make the loan transparent and have it noted publicly versus on the consent calendar. So the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved that day. And that was just in side note, too. They did make the announcement that you, that this meeting would happen the following day at that meeting. All right. The next one is the Tulare County Economic Development Coordination Meeting of September the 29th. Earlier in September, we had received a request from the Tulare County Economic Development CEO to meet with the board member, which I serve for Porterville, and each of the city managers and economic development staff to tour the city. Mr. Jason Reidenhour, Ms. Alita Verdusco and I met with the CEO Erica Di Olivera to have conversations related to economic development for the Porterville area. She accompanied us and Mr. Reidenhour took us several areas, identifying each project transportation, industrial business, housing hotels. This is in no particular order, but we were out by the airport, the casino, the college, the River, Watplano, Westwood, Morton Henderson, Main Street, the 190, Foster Farms area, Burton, Porterville Unified School District. We covered Porterville. And during the tour, she was able to visibly see the areas. When there are discussions amongst the TCED staff and the city, she will be able to connect which areas in Porterville. And I want to thank Jason and Alita for personally taking the time to accommodate this request. Okay. The Sierra View Medical Foundation Gala. I was in attendance to support the event. I once served on the foundation board and I also served on the Sierra View Hospital Board. The, the mission of the foundation board is always to purchase equipment for the hospital. This year, their goal was to raise funds and purchase 20 workstations on wheels and their units to be used at the hospital. A company, there were many, community medical and several friends. It was a nice combination. It was good to be in attendance, to meet new and reconnect with several members of the community that support the foundation. The badge pinning ceremony was held yesterday. I attended the badge pinning ceremony. It is always an honor to be in attendance, to watch officers being sworn in, to meet them personally and their families. Yesterday's officer not only had her family members present, but retired Chief of Police and several officers from the Avonel area who came to support her. Congratulations to the new officer, Sara I. Jimenez. A big welcome to the department and to this city for the overall protection of the community. Councilmember Tate, you were also present. Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, it's just always exciting to be able to be a part of that because you can see the, the pride of the individual that's entering into their new position, as well as the support that she gets from the other police officers that usually try to be here to attend as well. It's, these events are open and, and the public can come. And it's a good opportunity to meet people from not just here in Porterville, but other law enforcement agencies that were here as well.
Thank you. We'll now go into the reports. This is a time for all committee commission, board reports, subcommittee reports and staff
Thank you, Honor. Just a single staff, staff informational report, speaking to the upcoming fall free community cleanup and disposal event, which is scheduled for Saturday, October 15th, 2022, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the city's corporation yard. Simply provide a current City of Porterville refuse bill and be able to bring different materials. We also try to coincide this with the county offering their household hazardous waste so that those materials that were not permitted to accept are also be able to dispose of that same day.
Thank you. Does council have any comment or any question? No? Thank you, Mr. Lawless. We'll now go to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made in which item the event, the event, the item will be removed from the consent calendar. All items removed from the consent calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of scheduled matters. How does council wish to pursue? If there are no noted conflicts of interest or any items to be pulled, which direction do you want to go?
I'll move to accept the consent calendar as written, items 1 through 19, as stated in the agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Wyrock.
I'll second that.
And a second by Councilmember Tate. Please call for the vote.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Aye. Passed as unanimous for Zara. We'll now go into scheduled matters. Mr. Lawless.
Thank you, Honor. Two scheduled matters before the council this evening. The first is the consideration of appointments to the Animal Control Commission. And Ms. Hildreth will provide that staff.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, mayor, members of council. Three commissioners on the Animal Control Commission have terms expiring at the end of this month. Those are Kathy Gwynn, Jerry Hall and Kathleen Harris. Commissioners Gwynn, Hall and Harris have indicated their interest in continuing to serve on the commission and have submitted the request for reappointment for the council's consideration. Additionally, there are all, there is also one vacancy on the commission with the term also set to expire in September 2024. Staff is in receipt of two requests for appointment, one from Art Duran Jr. and one from Lacy Goodlett. And both of those requests are included in your packets for consideration. Both are, both of the applicants do reside within the city limits and therefore meet the eligibility requirements. And as the commission knows, the Animal Control Commission is an advisory body to the city council on matters concerning animal control services within the City of Porterville. It is comprised of five city residents representing a cross-section of the community who serve staggered four-year terms. So at this time, staff recommends that the city council consider the reappointment requests of Kathy Gwynn, Jerry Hall and Kathleen Harris for terms expiring in 2026 and consider the appointment of one of the individuals to the vacant seat on the commission with the term expiring in 2024. Thank you, I'm available for questions.
Does council have any questions? How does council wish to proceed?
I'll make a motion that we accept the staff report and appoint the individuals to the Animal Control Commission and reappoint those seeking reappointment.
We have a motion by Councilmember Wyrock?
Point of clarification, so we have two requests from new individuals. Well, actually, one is a new individual. Mr. Art Duran has previously served, but we do have one vacancy. So we'll need to select one of the two.
Pardon me.
You could go ahead and amend your motion to reappoint the, the others, though, and then have that taken, if you want to go ahead and take care of that, because there was the reappointment of those that were already serving. And then you can handle the other one separately, since you already have a motion on the table. So if you are good with consenting to your motion, that amendment and the second, also consenting to that, you could go ahead and vote on that portion.
I'll withdraw my motion in entirety so that we can just handle it all in one motion.
That works, too.
Okay. So what is the motion?
So the motion would be reappoint Art Durham.
Actually, so the, I think the first, well, yeah, you guys can consider whether, so you've got two off, you've got two, I would recommend doing two separate items, no matter what. You can go ahead and take the, there are the reappointments and you can go ahead and approve the reappointments. And then you can separately consider whether you wish to appoint Mr. Duran or Ms. Gwynn for that remaining seat. Makes sense?
Somewhat. I'll withdraw once again and I'll just yield to the mayor.
All right. The reappointment, the reappointments would be, oh, Councilmember Stowe, please.
Are either the new candidates for the opening, are they in the, in the audience? So they may want to speak and tell about themselves before we.
Are any of the applicants here? No.
Thank you.
All right.
And just for clarification, the two new appointments would either be, the one new appointment would either be Mr. Art Duran, who has previously served, however, his term has since expired. I believe it expired in 2020. Or you could appoint Lacy Goodlett.
That would be for the new seat.
Correct.
So that's the clarification that was needed here. I would like to make the motion that we reappoint Commissioners Gwynn, Hall and Harris. And we'll do that one first.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Call for the vote on the reappointment.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Aye. And I, now we need to appoint one or the other. We either need to appoint Art Duran Jr. or Lacy Goodlett. How does council wish to proceed on that? You've heard Ms. Hildreth state that Mr. Duran has served before and we have Ms. Goodlett, who is wanting to serve.
Jesus. Yeah, I do have a thought, but I, I just wanted some information on Mr. Duran. How long has he served?
I believe he's served two consecutive terms.
Did you hear that, council member?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes. And I'm going to ask once again, in which direction does council want to go? For the one seat, that would be for the one seat.
I want to nominate Mrs. Goodlett.
We have, we have a recommendation for Lacy Goodlett.
For Mrs. Goodlett.
Is that a motion, Milt?
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
That's his motion.
Just wanted clarification. Thank you.
We have a motion for Lacey Goodlett.
But I'd like to make a motion to nominate her.
I will second that. Is there any further discussion up on the council seats? No further discussion. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Aye. Thank you. Passage unanimous, four zero. So we have the reappointment with the four zero and the new seat for Lacey Goodlett with the four zero. Thank you very much. All right. We will now go on to the next scheduled matter.
Thank you, Honor. A final scheduled matter for this evening is to consider the wholly local cannabis adult use dispensary request for proposals pursuant to the city council's direction at its meeting on December 21st, 2021. City staff has completed the request for proposals or RFP process for wholly local cannabis business operating permit for retail dispensary. Three proposals were received through the RFP process, which have recently completed independent third-party evaluation and are now subject to interview by the council. At its meeting last week on September 21st, the council's cannabis ad hoc committee met and recommends that the city council schedule a special meeting for Monday, October 24th, beginning at 6:00 PM for the purposes of interviewing the three applicants for the, of the three proposals received. As contained in the RFP, the proposals were eligible for up to 50 points in the independent third-party evaluation, and each member of council will be allocated up to 10 points per proposal for a total of up to 100 total points possible. So as not to bias the council, it was also the recommendation of the committee that the scores from the independent third-party review not be released prior to the council interviews. Recommendation is that the city council approve the scheduling of a special meeting for Monday, October 24th, at 6:00 PM to interview the qualified respondents to the RFP for wholly local cannabis business operating permit for retail dispensary. Happy to answer any questions or providing, answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much for that report. And this is to schedule the meeting for October the 24th. Has there been a process already established by the ad hoc committee for the interview process? Have there been any criteria established by the ad hoc committee for that?
Oh, your honor.
Okay. How does coun, does council have any questions to that regard? Councilmember Stowe, do you have any question to this? I can't hear you.
I muted myself again. I didn't, didn't want to mute it. But I was going to say, I'm, I'm all in favor if we can meet the 24th at 6:00 PM to interview the, the respondent.
Okay. I only had the question, if there is a criteria, are we going to use the same criteria that, like, not the criteria, but for the interview, the, when we do the interview, that, that will have sort of based like what we did the last time?
We, uh, we can provide some, uh, recommended, as for example, you did a draw for who went first, because it is an open meeting. And questions that are prepared, there was a draw as to who.
Correct. There was a lottery draw at that time.
And, and with that as well, with some pre-prepared questions, members of council did come with their own questions, which, uh, they asked to, you know, with the council's support also asked, which was then asked of each of the candidates.
Okay. Well, that was sort of, I know that the last time that the ad hoc committee were the ones that presented the package as to the questions and as to the recommendation, as to the lottery, and that, how, who, how, like, maybe they had 10 minutes to speak on behalf of themselves, and no more than so many people per each, um, business. And that way they would have the opportunity to tell us about themselves and then the questions that we would have for them and go from there. So that was sort of my question to, if the ad hoc committee could work on that and come up with, and work with legal counsel with that format and different questions. To that regard. I don't know.
Yes, we have one member of the ad hoc committee.
Well, I would support it completely. I mean,
Oh, two.
We looked at the, the requirements for them to develop their plan and to get it submitted for review. It went to third-party evaluation, and there's a whole checklist that everybody followed to put it together. I think there's members in the audience and maybe in the community that might have some questions that they would like our, our, our group to consider asking, as well as some other questions we could get possibly from legal counsel and, and prepare a, you know, a series of questions for them and an interview, if you will, checklist, so that we can ask those questions. I think we could probably do it by the end of this week. How soon would you like that to be reviewed? Or can we just bring it to the ad hoc or to the meeting?
Yeah, what I recommend is, since we've already, we're already on a tight timeframe, because we've got the, the meeting scheduled for the 24th for the city council, we could have the ad hoc committee meet and come up with that. And then the, the city council can always make changes to it right before commencing the interviews. But that way you don't have to have another city council meeting and, you know, intervening in that.
Well, that would be the direction, because that would be the discussion that we're having here is we're going, we're going to schedule, it's going to happen on the 24th. It's going to happen at 6 o'clock.
Great recommendation.
And it's just about getting that information put together for the.
Well, I'm looking, we do have the 18th too, so.
This was a matter of trying to get this on the calendar for folks to participate. So we can certainly bring an item back.
So we can get it, yeah.
Here, here's what you did last time. How do you wish to modify it?
Okay, thank you.
And I think we could even have the ad hoc meet in between, between now and the 18th.
Thank you.
So that there's recommendations and the council can finalize it. Yeah.
All right. So I'm going to, okay. So the recommendation, need the motion for the meeting?
Well, I, I would make a motion that we approve the, the item 21, the wholly local cannabis adult use dispensary request for proposals for Monday, October 24th at 6:00 PM, with a meeting beforehand by the ad hoc committee to review and approve a questionnaire for the applicants.
And to interview the qualified candidate.
And that will happen on the 24th.
Correct, to interview. We have a motion on the table. Made by councilmember Wyrock?
I will second.
Councilmember Stowe has seconded that. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Wyrock?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Aye. Passage unanimous, four zero. That meeting is scheduled for Monday, October the 24th. We'll now go into oral communications. Is there anyone that would like to come forth on oral communications?
Because we went through this with the last round, where you gave the licenses to out-of-state people, so the money leaves the city of Porterville. And we discussed that, and we tried to explain to you the economics of how things work. So now you went against your committee's recommendations, and you've opened it up, and you've got three different groups in there. But when I look at the information on those three people that have applied, I don't see that they're locally owned except one. When you look at the green, whatever it is, the people live in Visalia. There's a place in Woodlake. They don't live in Porterville. So I'm a little confused, because you used the term wholly locally owned. But then you've opened it up to people that don't live in Porterville, so they're not local, so it's not wholly locally owned. So basically, you just wanted to give out a third license to somebody out of town so more money could be taken out of the community. So none of this makes any sense to me. I, I think we explained it to you. If you spend a dollar in a corporate business, it generates a dollar fifty into your community. But if you spend a dollar in a private 100% local business, it will generate four dollars into your community. I think the community would rather have four dollars per dollar generated than a dollar fifty per dollar. I don't know what you guys don't get about locally owned, but locally owned should mean they live in Porterville. Shouldn't mean they live in Visalia. Shouldn't mean they live in Bakersfield. Shouldn't mean they live in Fresno. That's not local. It's within the valley, but it's not local. How can you give a license when you say locally owned to non-locals? It, it's again going against, I, I just don't understand what's going on with you guys. And then, like I said, spending more money, going through this all over again. We already did this once. We already spent the money once. But if you're going to do a wholly locally owned, let's make it truly a locally owned business.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forth?
Um, councilman Wyrock, I, you haven't been in on this process. It started on May 21st, 2019, three years ago. And the city council adopted by ordinance number 1853, 1879, and 1889. And that's local regulations allowing commercial cannabis activities in Porterville. At the meeting on December 17th, 2019, the city council gave authorization to distribute the request for proposals for cannabis business operating permits for retail dispensaries in Porterville. And that was in scheduled matters number 16 on that agenda. At the, at the city council meeting on December 21st, 2021, a request was made to provide a new RFP for a wholly locally owned dispensary. This RFP was to be released on January 3rd, 2022. There's one applicant that was in this process since day one. And he was al, he was already vetted, went through the process, got a high score. And the person that had applied that was ahead of him, which was the reservation, dropped out. So he was next in line. He'd already been through the points process. He was already qualified. But then they come out and they want to do this over again, over and over again. What, what is going on? The schedule that they proposed was, uh, the RFP was supposed to be released on Monday, January 3rd, 2022. Written questions from applications Friday, January 14th, 2022. Answers to written questions and issues Monday, January 24th, 2022. Submit final application Friday, February 4th, 2022 by 4:00 PM with a $750 review fee. Staff review of applications Friday, February 18th, 2022. Proposal complete, corrected, applications and a $7,500 fee was due at that time on February 25th, 2022. Third-party review, independent, Monday, March 28th, 2022. Interview with city council April 20th, 2022. Now, we're in October. They haven't had interviews. They haven't had independent reviews on, on March 28th, 2022. And now the, and the last thing was supposed to be the announcement of selected applicants, who they selected. And the date for that was supposed to be determined. Now we're in October. Now the city council wants to start the process over again with two new applicants. Mr. Darren Garrett of Bloom Farms went through the selection process. Over three years ago, the city council tried to disqualify his original application because they said it was six minutes late and didn't meet their deadline. Eventually, the city council decided to accept Mr. Garrett's application. Mr. Garrett and Bloom Farms should have been approved when this whole process began. They are the only applicant that's qualified for the wholly locally owned dispensary. And the city council knows this from looking at the applications. Why does the city council keep changing the rules after the process has already started? Are you going to keep changing the rules in the process until you can find somebody that you like? Or will you give the license to the most qualified applicant, Mr. Darren Garrett and Bloom Farms? He's been waiting for a long time for a decision. He has a lot of money tied up in a building and fees and everything that he's had to come up with, with no decision. Um, I suggest you step up and do the right thing tonight. It's long overdue.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forth?
Hello. My name is Maria Marrero. I live at 13857, Road 284, here in Porterville. And I'd like to give you copies because, uh, if I can hand them to you. When we first put in our application, and it was accepted, and we go through this whole process, we were to register on your public purchasing website. And this is what it comes up to. I cannot get a copy of the RFP. I cannot get a copy of the application unless I register. Once I registered, it took me 24 hours to say, hey, you're registered, log in. So once I got there, the very top page that looks like this, I'm going to read it to you, a little bits of it. It's the RFP SR 1922, wholly locally owned cannabis business operating permit for retail dispensary. Um, the number is that SR 1922. The, that paragraph down toward the bottom that says, "Proposed forms may be inspected and electronically downloaded at no cost at the public purchasing website." And it gives the website. "No copies of said document will be provided by the city." That means I cannot walk in and say, hey, can I get a copy of the RFP? "All addendums and corresponding during this process will be handled electronically through the public purchase website." Questions regarding these requests for proposals are due no later than Friday, January 14th. And at the way bottom, if you see, it says, 1922, wholly locally owned cannabis business operating permit for retail dispensary PDF, download. That means I have to download that app. Underneath it, it says, 1922, number one, wholly locally owned cannabis business operating permit PDF. Under the RFP, you will see the attachment, and that is the addendum. Only one addendum that went with that. The RFP proposed, RFP I printed for you. On page two, that first paragraph under background, the very last part says, "In an effort to support a wholly local owned dispensary." So we're on the right RFP. Second paragraph, summary of cannabis request for proposal. Third sentence, this RFP is for a wholly locally owned adult-use cannabis dispensary in the city of Porterville, locally owned. It's defined as an owner who is currently resides and/or owns a business within Porterville urban area boundary, UAB. I did attach a copy of the map for you. It is the Porterville surrounding area. This individual, for every, okay, it must be an individual as per the Porterville urban boundary, as defined in the 2030 general plan, for at least three years. If the applicant is an entity, one or more, other than the individual, each and every member of that entity must meet the definition of local. That means they have to be here. They have to be from Porterville. The next paragraph, the last half of the first, um, sentence says, "The applicant must have control over a physical location within the approved downtown district or the airport industrial zone." Page three, that paragraph, phase two, the last half of that paragraph says, "Applicants and, and related form must be inspected and electronically downloaded with no cost at the public purchase website. No copies of said documents will be provided by the city. All agenda and correspondent during the application." All agenda and correspondent during the application process will be handled electronically through the public purchase website." Page four, the bottom, "Any changes to the proposed requirements will be made in written addendum posted in the city website. A failure of the applicant to read any amended shall be, shall have no effect on the validity, validity of such modification." I just wanted to go through that part so that we're all on the same page as far as what the RFP said. I understand you're very busy. You have a lot, a lot of committees, a lot of reading. This took me a lot, a lot of reading. Okay, the purchase public website. If you went today, which I printed this part, it says there was two candidates that registered. Supposedly, what was printed, there's three of us in the final running. There's two, Uncle Green and Bloom Farms. I am part of Bloom Farms. Uncle Green contacts Sabrina Lani, Woodlake. That is not in the boundaries of what you identified of Porterville urban boundaries. Attached to that are three forms from the state of California. General information I printed today. State of California says Uncle Green, the address is Woodlake, owned by Sabrina Lani. The next one, the corporation statement and information, Uncle Green. Entity, Uncle Green. Business address, Visalia, California. Mailing address, Visalia, California. Street address of executive office, Visalia, California. Officers, chief executive officer, Sabrina, Visalia, California. Secretary, Sabrina Senior Lani, Visalia, California. And it goes on. The last page again, again, state of California information statement, Uncle Green, Woodlake, Woodlake and Visalia. From the, the two people that were registered on the RFP process, only one it says Porterville, California. Both officers that are on the submitted part said Porterville. My driver's license says Porterville. Darren, born, raised, never left. I did go for a time and I'm back. I've been back. And it says Porterville. The other third person never registered.
I'm gonna ask you to summarize, please.
Okay, so what I just want to say is, when you said wholly local, our paperwork said wholly local. We are still here. We are Bloom Farms and we are wholly locally owned.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forth?
Hello, my name is Darren Garrett. I think my address is on the record. If you need me to say it, I'll say it.
It's okay.
Okay. Yeah, whenever we look at the, the public purchasing website, and I only seen the two applicants on there, which is Bloom Farms and Darren and Uncle Greens, I came down to the city, to the main office down here and asked them, is there any more applicants that were registered on the, the application process? And I was told there was. And I said, well, can we get the information on who, it is public information on who we're, who we're going to be bidding against? And if there is another way to do it, why doesn't it say in the RFP? Whenever we're looking at the RFP, it says there's only one way to register, and that's through the Porterville Public Purchasing Website. When I registered the Porterville Public Purchasing Website, I had to put my name, my address, where I lived at, so that the public could see who's bidding on the project. If there was another way to do it where I didn't have to list my name and my address, probably for security reasons, I wouldn't have listed it. But it's in the city of Porterville's RFP that says that we have to get that information through the public purchasing website. We went through this a few years back, and I don't want to go in the past because you know the past is over with, but we also had another company a few years back that wasn't registered on the RFP. And I did bring that up, but I don't know whatever happened with that process. It kind of went, kind of went sideways. But we're not here to have a conflict with the city or cause any kind of problems. I mean, we've been in this process for, I don't know, close to three years now. The $750,000 of real estate tied up for three years, $1.2 million in the bank for three years just sitting there so that we could prove our capital, that we could support this business. Bloom Farms doesn't have any outside corporate money that we have taken. It's wholly local owned and money that has been worked very hard for. The other two applicants, I'm not gonna say anything bad about anybody, but they are not wholly local-owned companies in Porterville. I think in the application, it says that you have to prove that you live in Porterville, you have resided in Porterville, you own a business in Porterville for three years. So in the third-party review, I would ask that you look at the paperwork to see how they proved their residency, how they proved that they own a business in Porterville for three years, and, and who they're tied to. The Main Street Anthropology wasn't even on the, the Porterville Public Purchasing Website. I wouldn't even know who we're, who we're competing with, but Main Street Anthropology knows Darren Garrett, they know my address, they know Uncle Green, they know their address because that's what the RFP said. So we haven't pulled any kind of sly moves. We have approached this with complete honesty. All of our paperwork is straight. We haven't lied to the city to get approved for the cannabis application. So we would just like the city to do what is, what is right at this point. I mean, three years of being in this process, I know some of the council members haven't been on seat that long, but this has been going on for about three years. I mean, at one time, we were approved, I'll just take one more minute, I'll summarize.
Thank you.
At one time, after the other, the first two applicants were given the license, which we all know were from LA, and we all know they were awarded the 15 points that should have only went to the local-owned guys in here in Porterville. But that, that process is done. After that process, city council did say in one meeting that we have two qualified applicants left, which is Bloom Farms and the Tulley Indian Reservation. And we're not going to open this back up for bid, we're not gonna waste any more time with it. But when the reservation dropped out, they, they had been dropped out for four or five months. I, I never got a word that they dropped out. The way I found out that the reservation had pulled their application is because I did a huge project for them. I got the opportunity to talk to the guy that submitted the application, and he said, hey Darren, we pulled our application, so man, you won, good luck. So I came to the city and said, hey, how come we haven't been awarded the application? And the next thing I know, you know, five or six months later, they're reopening it up for bid again. And now we're coming to the same point where we're, we're having to bid against companies that are not wholly local-owned. So I would just encourage you to look into how are they proving they have been in Porterville for three years, and how are they proving they own a business in Porterville, and where they come from? Now, I come from Porterville. I've been born and raised in Porterville. And that's, that's really all I have to say. And I, I didn't come up here to give you guys a hard time. I didn't come up here to put anybody down. I just came up here to speak the truth, because the truth needs to be said. Because when it comes to this kind of business, you're gonna get a lot of paperwork that probably can't be backed up with proof. Because these outside companies want this type of business. To me, they want to come into the town, rob the town, they're gonna take the money, they're gonna leave. Like I said, I own a business in, two businesses in Nevada. But when I work in, in Nevada, my money doesn't stay in Nevada, it comes back to Porterville. And, but if I lived in Nevada and I worked in California, my money would go back to Nevada. So every penny that's made from this dispensary will stay in Porterville, and good things will be done with it. I mean, I think I have a very good reputation for doing a lot of good things for the city of Porto-, for the residents and the city of Porterville. I've made hero of the year two times in my life through the Porterville newspaper. And, and I'm not boasting. I do those things because I like to do things for people that are in need. But that being said, I wish that you guys would really look into the other two applications to find out why Main Street Anthropology was not listed and why I was told there's another way to do it when the application doesn't say there's another way. It just says there's one way to do it. So I just hope that everybody does the right thing. And you guys have a good night.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forth? No? Anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll go on to other matters. Councilmember Stone, anything you'd like to say under other matters?
No, I don't, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm just as anxious as anyone is, is to get this whole thing established and taken care of as far as our cannabis dispensaries. When you look at the guidelines, it appears that they, the, the people that are going to be running and owning the, the business on all three of these are not really Porterville residents. But they do have businesses and have established it through that criteria. Why we started all over again, I wasn't part of that whole process, so I can't really speak. Can, does anybody else have that?
I can add some clarification here.
Sure.
I think it might be good just because we heard repeated stuff.
Right.
So the reason why there's a couple, so the RF, the public purchase process was only used, only used for the first round. We still, we had two of, two that were, that are now eligible for wholly local that are still appearing on that because they're still ongoing in the process. It's the only reason why they're showing up there. We specifically did not require that for the locally owned application. So, so no one was required to do that. So that's why there's, there's no, so there's three, there are three valid received RFPs that need to be evaluated. Yes, we'll evaluate for residency, or not residency, because actually frankly residency's not the requirement, because residency would disqualify all three.
Right.
But residency or eligibility for the wholly local, you know, criteria, which was established as the urban area boundary, or, and owning a business for a certain period of time or residing in that area. So those were the requirements.
Right.
But like I said, if we were to go solely on residency, none of these would apply. None of these would be eligible.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Wyrock, anything you'd like to say?
Sure. Another great meeting here at City Hall. I enjoyed being a part of it. Madam Mayor, I'd like to thank you for your initiative and commitment to attend all the meetings that you do and to provide us all with the, with the notes and the dates of the upcoming meetings for participation. Again, participation is live and well here tonight, and I appreciate our city manager for briefing me so often on this cannabis proposal. My first one-on-one with him was a stack of documents that I have at home, I don't have with me, but some of the documents that were shared with us tonight were included in that information. And I appreciate the input from all of you tonight at the podium, bringing, you know, your information to share with us to open maybe our perspectives to this. During the ad hoc committee, I was kind of curious about how much cannabis is gonna be sold in Porterville. And there's two that are gonna be opening soon, and will a third one, is it really that big of a demand, or will it take away from the third? And it doesn't really matter what I think, but I am curious to see what the evaluators, you know, we didn't want to know the scores in advance, and there was a purpose to that. We have the evaluation criteria of what the proposal needed to look like that will be reviewed. And then we'll take into effect some of the comments that I heard tonight to possibly weave them into the interview process, I promise you that. And if anybody else has any kind of thoughts that they'd like to provide to the council or to me specifically, or to Councilmember Tate, please do so, you know how to reach us, and, you know, we'll be sure to take it under advisement. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say congratulations to Rogelio Caddio, the Eastern Tulley River Groundwater Sustainability Agency person who will be seated on the Tulare County Water Commission. And his term will expire in April of 2024. Thank you for being here this evening, it is appreciated. And I also wanted to say that Dr. Claudia Habib had invited me to go out to the college yesterday and to meet and speak with Gary Soto, a well-known author, and it was nice to have the conversation. He shared the story that the last time he was here in Porterville was about 20 years ago, and he lost the hubcap, and he was gonna go back and look for it, thinking it would still be there. But he was very enlightening and very engaged with the community. I want to thank Public Safety, Police and Fire Department. I'd like to see some of these screens go on. I see that Brian's on, Mr. Knight, Mr. Moore, and everybody. I like to see that as we conclude toward the end of the evening, I like to see your faces, because I want to thank all the work that you do. I see Mr. Bartow's name is on there. Welcome back. We've missed you quite a bit. It's good to see you. And Javier, you too. But once again, thank to all the staff and to the officers who are always on task with all of us, and it is appreciated. Your work doesn't go unnoticed. Mr. Lawless?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple things. Corporate Games recently wrapped up, and appreciate all that Donnie and Amy and the Parks and Land staff did in putting on another great event. And pleased to also say that the city of Porterville was well-represented in finishing second place. Walmart Blue again. How many, how many cups do they have, Donnie?
I believe it's six out of the eleven.
Oh, good grief. So tryouts for the city's team will begin next month. Donnie would know well how to put on spring training, so we'll start working on that. So I just want to say thanks for all that. And then they're turning right around and putting on Pioneer Days this coming weekend.
Oh, yes.
When folks talk about things to do in the community, appreciate all that Donnie and his staff does in, in putting that on. Rib Cook Off and other wonderful events associated with that. Also next week, we will have Senator Hurtado here.
Oh, yes.
Who will be making a ceremonial presentation of funds for the new EOC and Public Safety Administration building and, and really fortifying the, the city's public safety and consolidation of that and protection of the community. And also have coming up this weekend, somebody has a birthday. Let's see, let's see if she acknowledges it. She's just gonna, she's just gonna, at this time, she's just not gonna respond, apparently.
Maria just doesn't respond. She just has her name up there. She doesn't even turn her computer on.
Maria, are you gonna respond at this time? Okay, see.
Wow, gonna have a birthday. Now, Mr. Knight, are you gonna be cooking for the Pioneer Days?
Unfortunately not this year. I'll send out an invitation for next year.
Okay, but.
And pleased to say that Mr. Knight is gonna be marrying off one of his kids, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so he's, he's got a lot on his plate at this time as well.
Wow, everybody, thank you, everybody. It is 7:57. Meeting.